...of April 9th. Obviously, I look different at this chair if you're, this is the first time you're tuning in. For the first meeting in April, the reorganization meeting, I have the honor of chairing for the first recorded meeting. So, because this is a hybrid meeting, the public can also access this meeting via WebEx technology. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. We'll alternate between the two. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV, that's BCAT, and video/audio recordings are being made. The meeting of the Burlington School Committee will be held in-person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. There's also, you can access this meeting via telephone. That number is 408-418-9388 with the access code of 2346-669-4927 with the password, as always, of Tuesday. The Burlington Equity Statement is educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever they need to develop their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child and individual. So with that, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the proper allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America, and a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and where there is liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. As I said, it's an honor for me to chair this evening. Before we start the school committee reorganization, I wanted to express an apology and then gratitude. So I didn't realize that last night's Fox Hill Building Committee, that our newest committee member, Ms. Navoychek, I'm sorry, had already been sworn in. So technically, last night was your first official school committee meeting. So I apologize that I did not welcome you and recognize you. It's such an important part of this committee to communicate community values, and it's sort of the staff's job to operationalize those values. And this committee has always been very welcoming, and I didn't uphold that last night. So I apologize. And certainly, you are welcome. Public schools don't work, and now the gratitude part, public schools don't work without people extending themselves. Members of the community, like the school committee members here, and it takes a lot to put yourself out there and to essentially volunteer lots of time to serve the community and to try to improve the lives of all children in the community. So thank you for taking that on. And that gratitude then also has to be extended to committee member, former committee member, Martha Simon. Martha, we worked together for nine years. Again, schools couldn't function without your dedication, and I just wanted to say thank you for your service. We made, I think we accomplished some great things during that time. And again, I think the focus was always on improving the lives of all children. So thank you for your service as we move forward. So that's my gratitude. And again, I do apologize that I didn't recognize that you had missed one in already, Ms. Navoychek. So I apologize. All right. School committee reorganization and subcommittee assignments. And you have an updated list on your, at your seats where basically 21 and 22 were added after a conversation that I had with the committee's attorney, Darren Klein. And when we get to those, if there are questions, I can certainly address those questions. But the first motion would be to select a chair of the committee moving forward. So is there a, and that gets me out of the seat happily. So is there a motion for a school committee chair?
I'd like to make a motion for Mrs. Monaco to be voted in as chair of the school committee.
I'm sorry, just would want to recognize Ms. Bond, who is remote. Ms. Bond, again, I'm sorry for the reason that you were remote. And so again, Ms. Bond made a motion. So thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Mr. Navoychek is the second. Is there any discussion about the motion for chair in the second that was made? Ms. Masardo?
I would just like to note my disappointment that this committee is defying precedent at this point in time, as I was vice chair last year, and the tradition of this school committee is to move the vice chair to chair. Thank you.
Mrs. Bond, do you have that motion as well?
Thank you, Ms. Masardo.
Yes, I do. I'd like to make a motion for Ms. Masardo to be voted in as vice chair of the school
Is there any further discussion?
committee.
Second.
Because we have a remote member tonight, I need to do a roll call.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
So we'll move the motion to a vote.
I will take a roll call.
Ms. Bond?
Aye.
Mrs. Bond?
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
No.
Ms. Navoychek?
Ms. Masardo?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Brooks?
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Masardo?
Mr. Navoychek?
Aye.
Yes.
And Jim O'Toole?
The ayes have it, three to two.
Aye. We have a new vice chair as well.
Ms. Monaco, you are chair of the school committee moving forward.
Thank you.
You stuck with me again.
As we go through the school committee assignments, we have Recreation Commission. Mr. Brooks, I assume you want to stay on that? You might want this.
Correct.
Okay. And we need two members to serve on the Academic Review Board. Melissa, do you want to stay on that?
Yes.
Does any, Megan, do you want that? Someone has to take Martha's spot on the Academic Review Board?
Yes, I'll take that.
Okay. Two members to serve on the Sick Leave Bank Committee. That is currently Dr. Conti and myself. I'm fine doing it if anyone wants to fight me for it. One member to serve on the Sick Leave Bank Committee of the Burlington School Administrators Association. That was Martha. Would someone like to take that on?
I'll take that.
Legislative contact person. That's Jeremy and Catherine. You both want to keep that?
I'll keep that.
I'll take.
Okay. Special Education Parent Advisory Committee is Catherine and me. Megan, I think you probably want that.
Yes.
So I will back off and let you have that.
I'll take.
Okay. Subcommittee to the Select Board is Catherine and myself, but I want to stay.
I'll stay.
Okay. Subcommittee to Ways and Means, does someone want to?
I'd like to take that if I could.
Okay. Jeremy. Subcommittee to the Board of Health, it's Jason, and it was Martha. Does someone want that?
Yeah, I'll take that.
Okay. Subcommittee to the Planning Board, Jeremy and Melissa, you want to keep those?
I'll keep that one.
Subcommittee for Wellness, we need one person to step up for that. Wellness Committee. Okay. Subcommittee for Transportation can stay as it is. Audit Subcommittee can stay as it is. The PTO Representatives, Black Hill, we can leave alone. Memorial, do you want to take that one? Megan?
Yes.
Pine Glen can stay. Frances Wyman can stay. Marshall Simons, you want to step in there?
Yes.
And the rest can stay. Okay. Burlington Youth and Family Services, does someone have a special interest in that?
I can do that.
Okay. Disability Access Commission?
I'll take that.
Okay. ALPEC Liaisons, Melissa's already on it. I can do it, you can do it.
Think we missed one?
We did, but let's just do all that.
No, policy.
Oh, yeah, I did miss that. Okay. So does anyone want ALPEC, or should I put myself on that? All right. Policy Subcommittee, you want that? Okay. District-wide School Safety Committee, Jeremy?
Yeah, I'd like to stay on that.
Okay. Now, the next three things that were added in, I had a very long discussion with Darren this morning. And he said, he gave me the motions for the Fox Hill Building Committee and the Burlington High School Building Committee. So Catherine, do you have those motions? Do you want to start those?
Yep. So based on what you've been advised, I'd like to make a motion to add Ms. Navoychek as a voting member of the Fox Hill Building Committee and to remove Martha Simon from the Fox Hill Building Committee.
Second.
This is not exactly something that we're doing because we want to do it. I've been told by Darren that this is how we have to approach it, and that if we want to make changes, we do it at a subsequent meeting.
Just point of clarification, so were we voting to remove Martha as a voting member? Or removing her entirely?
Both, but at a later date, we can make other arrangements to give her a different position if that's.
Definitely like as for that.
Madam Chair, can I just add to that?
Yes.
Part of what's complicating this is it's very, I'd say, rare for a full school committee to serve on building committees. So we're always posting the meetings concurrently with a full building committee and, well, with the building committee and a full school committee. So you all are representative on the school committees, on the building committees, but you're there because of your role in the school committee. So essentially, that role is changing, but that doesn't mean the makeup of the school building committee can't change. So that they're two separate.
Yeah, that's basically what I was getting at, is like removing the vote and she can still serve.
Absolutely, yes.
Right.
Second, was there a second?
I second.
Okay.
All right. So we'll do a roll call on that.
Are we voting these all together or just?
No. Let's do this one, and then I'll go back and do all the others. On this one motion that you made, Catherine, I'm going to do a roll call. So Catherine?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now let's go back and do one vote for all of the, all of the things that we've already gone through, all the changes that we've made. Is there a motion to that effect?
Just to clarify, was that just the Fox Hill?
No, all, all the way from Recreation.
But the last vote that we just did was?
That was just the Fox Hill.
Okay. And so we'll do one through 20 now. I move that we approve the appointments as discussed, numbers one through 20.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Jeremy?
Oh, aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Those are all voted. Okay, now we have the Burlington High School Building Subcommittee, and that's another.
Yes. Another motion? I'd like to make a motion for Mrs. Navoychek to add her as a voting member to the VHS Building Committee and to remove Martha Simon from the VHS Building Committee.
Second.
And again, it's the same situation, where we have to do it this way, and then we can readdress it after Eric and Darren figure it out. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Catherine?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then there was one more, which is we need a new vice chair for the Burlington High School Building Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to add Ms. Monaco as vice chair of the VHS Building Committee and to remove Ms. Simon as vice chair.
Second.
I'm willing to do that, not because I want to, but because I'm just willing to cover it for a while until we figure things out. So having said that, all those in favor, Jeremy?
I'd just like to make a comment that.
Sure.
I would actually like to take that on if we could, just to, you know, gain some skills and some broaden my experience on the committee, if we could possibly move to do that, because it seems like.
Sure. That works for me. Catherine, do you want to nominate Jeremy instead?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Jeremy would like to be vice chair. Would you like to nominate him instead?
Let me ask a question. You know, just because of what's going on right now, I'd like to leave my nomination as it is, and if we can revisit it later, we can do that.
All right, so what?
All right with you?
It's fine.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any desire to hang on to that.
Sure.
All right. So all those in favor, Jeremy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. So we've done those three things, and now we have the following formal appointments. The school committee designee to the lab collaborative is Dr. Conti. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Any question? All those in favor, Catherine?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Civil Rights Coordinator, two of them, Carrie Lamprey for students and Joanne Faust for staff. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, Catherine?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All, that's unanimous. Title IX Sexual Harassment Coordinators, Dr. Chen and Joanne Faust. Dr. Chen for students, Joanne Faust for staff. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Jeremy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. So we've done those three things, and now we have the following formal appointments. The school committee designee to the lab collaborative is Dr. Conti. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Any question? All those in favor, Catherine?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Civil Rights Coordinator, two of them, Carrie Lamprey for students and Joanne Faust for staff. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, Catherine?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All, that's unanimous. Title IX Sexual Harassment Coordinators, Dr. Chen and Joanne Faust. Dr. Chen for students, Joanne Faust for staff. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, Jeremy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Catherine, chair votes aye. Did you vote, Catherine? Catherine, did you vote?
Yes, I said aye.
Thanks. School Committee Recording Clerk, Mary Ann Fabry. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Catherine?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Have I done them all, Eric?
You have.
Okay. So we have a lot on our plate tonight. The next item is the approval of the warrant. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on the warrant? Okay, all those in favor, Jeremy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have done the warrant. Approval of the meeting minutes of the last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I assume you'll abstain. So Catherine?
Aye.
Megan? No. Yeah, all right.
Abstain.
Go ahead. Melissa?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Minutes are done. Public participation, is there anyone here for public participation? Martha?
Hello. For people who don't know me, I'm Martha Simon, the former school committee member. My tenure on the school committee ended last Saturday when I lost a close race for the seat. I'm a person who prefers to say goodbye, so here I am. I'm incredibly humbled and grateful to my supporter, supporters. I would like to thank all the voters who supported me, who looked at my record and said, "This is a person we want to help lead our schools." I'd like to express my disappointment that a couple of my colleagues actively worked against my reelection. During my nine years on the school committee, I worked hard to make sure that every child in the system, no matter what their religion, race, special needs, sexual orientation, background, or language, I worked hard to make sure that every child is treated well by their peers, by their teachers, and by all staff in the district. I want the teachers to have the resources and support that they need so that they can provide all of our students what they need to succeed. That way, every child can focus on learning and becoming their best self. I'm proud of what I accomplished in my nine years on the school committee, but there is more that needs to be done. I wish the new school committee well in continuing the work to make the Burlington Public Schools a place of belonging and achievement for every child. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Is there anyone else for public participation? Anyone online?
Catherine's going to hand up.
Just Catherine. Is your hand up? Go ahead, Catherine.
Yeah, I guess I would like to make a comment that, Martha, I'd like to thank you for all of your hard work, and I can appreciate the disappointment that you're feeling, but I do, it does bother me that you said I worked against you. All I did was support someone else, which you've done in the past as well. So again, I just wanted to make that public statement. I don't appreciate saying I worked against you. Because I didn't. I supported someone else.
Move on, information and reports. Matt?
Hello. So.
What have you got to tell us? Something about next year?
Um.
Come on, I'm dying to hear it.
I have a lot of options. We can just say that.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
I will probably have my decision by next meeting, so I'm leaning towards a school that starts with P and ends with a Rinston, so.
Yes, that's, gosh.
That's just the best way to put it, because it's not confirmed yet.
That's great.
But speaking of being a senior, it's quarter four, so all like the senior activities are starting. That's like prom, senior banquet, the sports night, the scholarship night, and then finally graduation. And right now, we just entered internship. So a lot of seniors, you know, exited the building and are kind of working out in the real world, getting some nice skills. Like my friend is working at a vet, and she was like, "I've been like hands-on with like the animals." I was like, "That's really cool. Really good opportunity for us." The VHS Music Department is sending students to Orlando tomorrow. They're going to perform and compete and honestly just have fun down there, and one last big hurrah for them. I know they practice and they've put in a lot of work. As you can tell by my outfit right now, spring sports are underway. I just had a volleyball game, actually, ended pretty quickly. It was a good, good team. And then students are ready for April break, which starts next week, but that also means AP exams are coming up. So got to put in the studying, but that's pretty much all I have for right now. Thank you.
It's really nice. It's really nice to see you here, and my granddaughter told me about your options. And I was just, on Easter, we were partying, and she told me about it, and I was like, "Oh, that is great. That is just wonderful." Any comments for Matt?
Go ahead.
Just Madam Chair, Matt, you were going to take off, but under another announcement, we were going to talk about National History Day, the states. So do you want to just talk to the school committee a little bit?
Sure.
Because we had a phenomenal showing, and you were there.
Yeah.
And then we're going to try to have the students come at our next meeting as well. We're just, tonight's sort of budget all the time, but why don't you just talk about the experience, please?
Got to, as somebody who competed for my last year sadly, with my partner and friend Emerson, it was really fun. You know, I got to see a lot of the middle schoolers who worked hard. They were all so cute about it. They were like cheering for each other, really pushing each other. We had two special awards at the high school go out, and then we had one national competitor move on. It was Celeste when she wrote a paper on College Board and like how it changed the application process. And then I think there were probably five projects from the middle school to move on, and they've really been working hard. And I know that Ms. Turpin already has them back working hard there, and Celeste is going to get all the help she has from peers and teachers at the high school to hopefully win. But, you know, it's a really nice experience to see friends, see coordinators, see other competitors that you've known for five, six years, and you see them one last time. So we've had a really good showing, really good job, and congrats to everyone.
That's great. Any other comments?
Just one, I can't remember if we had mentioned it last time, but the Devil Bots did win an Excellence in Engineering Award, so that was a pretty good achievement for those folks as well.
That's, that's great. Are they going to come and show us?
I can try and coordinate something.
That would be nice. Okay, any other comments from Matt? I guess you don't have to stay, huh? We'll miss you, though.
Thank you.
Again, Madam Chair, just for some specifics, I think the middle school had three first places, a second place, and five, one, two, three, four, five, six honorable mentions, and high school had a second place and an honorable mention. So we are gonna try, we're gonna invite Ms. Turbin and some of the team members here for April 30th. I think it's, it's just such a great thing and the teachers and kids are working so hard. They didn't really have time before states to come, we were trying to invite them, but they're busy, so they, sorry, you guys weren't top billing for them, but I think on the 30th they'll have time, they'll come in, share some of what they did, and talk a little bit more about the program. But again, just the teachers and kids have done an amazing job with that, with that experience.
Madam Chair, if I could echo that, they definitely put in a ton of work. I helped my nephew, I was fortunate enough to help him with some stuff and saw a bunch of the websites, they're pretty awesome.
Okay. Student report, subcommittee reports, anyone? Any subcommittee reports?
We did have another, did I report this, the wellness committee meeting?
You mentioned it at the last meeting.
Okay, then we're good.
Anything else? Catherine, you don't have any subcommittee reports, do you? Oh, okay.
No, sorry.
That's all right. Ways and Means, Stevie, you online?
I'm here, yes.
You got it?
We're wrapping up the local education budgets and we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow night at 6:00 PM in the main town hall conference room to vote on the capital warrant article items, the operating budget pending approval, and the accommodated accounts pending approval between 6:00 and 7:00, so we have a packed agenda and we're looking forward to seeing Dr. Conti, Cole, Bob, and the rest of the two new subcommittee members for the Ways and Means.
At 6 o'clock?
6:00 PM, yep, Eastern.
Okay, and that's at the town hall, right?
Well, yeah, right at town hall and then at 7:00 we start with the full body Ways and Means review of, starting with probably with Xiaoshin and then working through the local education budgets for Burlington, plus we will do the Essex vocational tech assessment as well.
Okay.
You mentioned you wanted to speak later at the budget hearing?
Yeah, when you, when you open the budget session, the public, excuse me, public budget session, I will make a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Okay, learning and equity.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Chen.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of reports that I wanna wrap into just one PowerPoint. It's the Students' Opportunity Act and an update on the math and literacy reviews that we're going to be doing next, please. Yes, it is that one. Thank you. In looking at these reports, we're always looking at it from the equity lens. There's been a lot of data analysis done and then looking at the reports and these are examples of some of the data that we've reviewed as well as the reports. And the qualitative analysis involves observation surveys, interviews, and learning walks. One of the things that came out of our Students' Opportunities Act is that the three areas of groups of students that we really need to be focusing on are our English learners, students with disabilities, primarily our white students identified with specific learning disability, and our low-income students. Next, please. And so as part of that vision that we wrapped up in our Students' Opportunities Act, this is also the vision that we have when we're doing a deep dive in our math and literacy review, is that we wanna maximize the impact of mathematics and literacy instruction for every student's mathematical and literacy learning so that our mathematical and literacy teaching, practices, and policies ensure equity of access and opportunities, the highest levels of mathematical and literacy learning for every child. At the same time, we're gonna be looking at policies, procedures, and practices to ensure equity and supportive of a diverse and inclusive learning environment in which every mathematics and literacy classroom for every mathematics and literacy learner. Next. The goals that will be coming out of not only the Student Opportunity Act, but also the work that we're gonna be doing with the math and literacy review is that we are in the process right now of conducting a district-wide program review in both math and literacy to identify current practices and needs across all tiers of instruction and interventions. We will be in the next three years developing consistent district-wide structures and systems for a multi-tiered system of support that identifies students at risk for academic failure and provide targeted interventions. We will be building a data literacy of district leaders, specialists, and teachers to ensure that all curricular instructional assessment and intervention decisions in math and literacy are informed by data. And we are gonna continue to build the instructional capacity of pre-K through 12 leadership specialists, special education teachers, and classroom teachers around evidence-aligned math and literacy. And that's gonna take about three years. Next, please. So what are our connected strategic steps? We, I talk about them as being connected and strategic steps because every single step and plan that we're doing and while we're analyzing is really trying to build a more cohesive plan. Presently, we are reviewing elementary, middle, and high school schedules. We're looking at the qualitative and quantitative review of data. We're gonna be focused on understanding the district curriculum accommodation plan. We're gonna be taking a deep dive into D cap and effective tier-one instruction that's going to be next year, and we're gonna continue on for about three years of honing into our MTSS structure. And we're gonna continue to look at math and literacy instruction with a focus on understanding by design and also university design of learning. Is there a question?
Through the chair. Can you just, this is the Statement of Opportunity Act that you're talking about?
Yes.
Can you just give a brief summary of, like an overview of that? Because this all falls under that, right?
This all falls under it.
What's the unifying goal?
The unifying goal for that is to really look at our MTSS structure. But in order to look at our MTSS structure and provide clear interventions, we have to take a look at our tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three structure. And when we take a look at our English learners, when we take a look at our students with specific learning disabilities, right, and also those of low income, we're also taking a look at our math scores and our literacy scores at the same time. So the Students' Opportunity Act, which is about a three-year, if I'm correct, about three years, is the projected amount that we get, lies very much in line with what we're doing with our math work and also our literacy work. That's why they're all nicely hand-in-hand. Does that help?
Yep, yep.
Through the chair, Ms. Masardo, do you, did you want background on the Student Opportunity Act itself?
I felt like that might have been helpful context for the folks at home, just like what all these, how all of these different connected strategic steps align to what we're doing.
So the Student Opportunity Act passed two or three years ago, I think it was prior to COVID, maybe four years ago then. It was an adjustment to the Chapter 70 formula. Chapter 70 is how districts receive state money, state aid, for education. The Chapter 70 formula, there are components of it that hadn't been updated since 1993 when it was first passed, so the state, for instance, hadn't made any adjustments to health insurance costs since 1993, so you can imagine the disparities between zip codes grew greater and greater over that time. The Student Opportunity Act was the state's way of providing more equity across different zip codes so that school spending would be, again, more equitable. The financial benefit to Burlington for the Student Opportunity Act was relatively small because we had already been spending a lot and significant for other districts, potentially gateway cities. Because this was in sort of an added bill to Chapter 70 to state funding, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requires districts to submit a plan as to how they're gonna spend this extra money. They really have it bifurcated though, which we advocated for, we being superintendents, because if you're a district that's getting $10 million, your plan needs to be much more detailed than if you're a district getting $100,000. And so we are on the lower end of that, so we have to provide a Student Opportunity Act, which you all need to approve, but again, it has to tie into everything else we're doing because the dollar amounts are relatively small. What helps suburban districts like Burlington, though as part of the Student Opportunity Act, as you know, out-of-district tuitions can be really expensive. The state reimburses us through Circuit Breaker, but with the Student Opportunity Act, they've also allowed the reimbursements to be extended to transportation services outside because we're required not only to pay tuition, but we're also required to pay transportation to those programs. So the Student, so it benefits, again, Burlington in some money for programming, with Lisa is describing how we're gonna be spending those dollars, but we also benefit with, through the accommodated account, through transportation reimbursements that you hear, you'll be hearing about later tonight. So that's sort of the Student Opportunity Act, again, is an extension of Chapter 70 that's relatively new. So that's the intention.
Thank you, thank you so much, Dr. Conti, for making, yes, thank you.
Just to add a little bit more context to that, so our Student Opportunity Act portion of our Chapter 70 for this year is about $103,000.
Hundred and what?
Three thousand.
Compared to?
Compared to what we get for Chapter 70, about 9.4 million.
This is the first time we're getting the hundred and three? Or what was it before?
No, so in this year, it's 103, next year, I think it's maybe 500 and 500. But I think this started in 2021, I'd have to go back and double check.
Any questions?
And just something I'm gonna say, for next year, state revenues are down, so we'll count on the student, the state funding when we get the state funding, so all I'm saying, in the grand scheme of our Chapter 70 revenue and our overall spending, this isn't a significant amount of money, that's sort of the intention.
I have a question to hold this thing, except I'm 99% sure Dr. Chen's gonna cover it, she's pretty thorough with these, but if she doesn't, I'll ask at the end.
Okay. But the reason why is because you have to, there are certain things that you can choose to cover on this, and one of the things that are qualitative and quantitative in analysis is showing us is that we need to have very solid tier-one instruction and we really need to focus on our MTSS structure. So a lot of the work that is being done when it comes to our math, also our literature, literacy review, and also in taking a look at these three reporting groups, is really ensuring that our students who are English learners, our students who are in special education, and those are in low economic status are receiving the highest quality of education possible and achieving and growing as high as possible. And so what I mean by connecting and putting all these strategic steps together is that while we have nice funding for this, this should always be connected in what we're doing from an equity lens, which is in making sure that every child succeeds. And they will ask you in this particular act to really analyze the data deeply to identify those reporting groups, and those are the three reporting groups, and those happen to also be the reporting groups that we, we need to focus on every child. But these are also reporting groups that we're also focusing in, in our math review and also in our literacy review as well, too.
And the MTSS is the multi-tier support structure?
It is.
Okay.
It is the MTSS structure and it focuses not only on the social-emotional, it focuses on discipline, it focuses on attendance, but this one focuses specifically on academics. So our focus is going to be on academics. And so tied to that is also BPS training in Orton-Gillingham for the following year. Eleven special education educators will be trained in the principles of Orton-Gillingham to become certified as Orton-Gillingham practitioners. We're also going to be doing some protected training for specialist and phonemic awareness that's gonna go on for about two years, reading specialists and special education teachers will be trained in evidence-based phonemic awareness intervention through a partnership with Landmark Outreach. We'll also be focusing on language-based consultation and programming for the next two years, again, through a partnership with Landmark Outreach. BPS will continue training general and special education teachers at the middle school for language-based teams. And through a partnership with Landmark Outreach, elementary school administration, interventionists, and teachers will consult with Landmark to begin designing language-based inclusive classrooms, and that will be at the elementary schools. All right, so these are some key dates, some key dates for the math and literature review as well. Once a month, just to let you know, next slide, Dr. Kateri Thunder has been meeting and doing observations. She came in on March 11th and 12th, but she's been meeting with a core group of teachers from pre-K through 12 and administrators and taking a look at doing the data analysis with us. Dr. Gail Lovett, who happens to be a researcher, a professor from the University of Virginia, who also does his work in Massachusetts, and who is really very renowned in her, in the science of reading, and also has a background of working with special education students and also as a reading specialist, and also has an L endorsement, will be coming here to speak to some people, observe our classrooms, to get a context. She's been taking a look at our data and literature and literacy. She'll be coming from April 22nd to 26th. We've also had a grant that was written, thank you, to Carrie Lamprey. We're gonna be getting support ed coming in from DUSCIE on May 8th and 9th, and they're actually going to be doing a deep review also of our data and at the same time, taking a look at our newcomers and taking a look at what we're employing in as L strategy or English language learner strategies. Dr. John Almerod will be coming in on June 25th to begin tier-one instruction and teacher clarity with the administrative team, department heads, and special education team chairs. Dr. Kateri Thunder is gonna be doing her curriculum work in math. And this group in June 26th and 27th will be taking a hard look at what are the power standards pre-K through 12, identifying what they are, identifying key assessments and developing an exemplary curriculum framework. And then on July 29th and 30th, she's gonna be meeting with that key group of teachers, specialists as well, too, and also administrators to see how best to begin to roll out some of these units in the math, in the math realm. And then we're gonna be continuing to plan ongoing PD throughout the school year for both staff and administrators, and this is gonna be on tier-one instruction, on D cap, which is the district accommodations, it's that, the plan that should be put in with all tier-one instruction, and then also taking a hard look at what we're doing with literacy and also with math, and that's where we're moving. And all of that has also been encompassed in the Students' Opportunities Act.
Okay, so maybe you didn't cover it, but you got close with the key dates. My question is just around with the Statement of Cares Act, so are there compliance and regulatory data metrics we need to provide to the state to stay in compliance, continue getting the money? And then what milestones have we identified to ensure we're getting into compliance? So when we moved from data gathering and strategizing into now we're actually implementing instruction, do we have those like codified somewhere?
Yes, they are, and they're actually in the whole document that was given to you tonight, the specific matrices, but in a summary, just to let you know that we, I did provide an update every single year for us to just to continue to update it. And so what was written, it's, I think it ended up being like what, somewhere between nine to 12 pages, is I provided them to say that we're gonna be focusing on MTSS. These structures will be put in place. We're also going to have about a year to look at some of our matrix to see how these three reporting groups do, and some of the MCAS achievement data as well, too. So there will be taking a look at the achievement data and taking a look at also the progress that's been made with our MTSS structure. And every year, I will be doing a report on this. So you'll also receive a report next year of how we did. And if we don't make those particular steps, I have to address in the report why we didn't make those particular steps and what we're going to do to make those steps.
I appreciate it. I just wanted to, you know, for the folks home to let them know, hey, we're, we're doing this as a concurrent process, it's not like.
It's not a separate process. It has to be all done together or, as I shared with you, there will be too many initiatives and I'll have a fruit salad thrown at me. Okay. I just wanna make sure that I covered that and to see were there any more questions because I know I took about three different things and wrapped them up, but what I wanted to at least share with folks is that all of this continues to be in our equity work and ensuring that every child really has the best quality education possible. And that's our focus.
So Madam Chair, we need a vote of the committee to approve the direction of the Student Opportunity Act, so we can tell the state that we have your blessing to move forward, again, with a focus on literacy and mathematics with the three, primarily the three subgroups that we, Lisa mentioned, because that's where our largest achievement gaps are.
So moved?
Second.
Could I actually have the, what you think the wording of the motion should be?
The, asking the Burlington School Committee to support the Student Opportunity Act as presented by Dr. Chen.
Any comments? Any questions? Go ahead, Meg.
I just wanted to say that I'm excited to see these priorities and I'm looking forward to seeing the data that supports our movement, and thank you.
Catherine, have her hand up or anything? Any questions?
No, thanks for asking.
Okay, so we'll put this to a vote. Mrs. Bond?
Yes.
Mrs. Novoicik?
Yes.
Mrs. Masardo?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
She votes aye. And I'm going back to first names because that's too complicated. Okay. Good job, Lisa. Thank you.
I have a Journey to Cares next.
All righty, let's go.
All right, yes, I know. All right, so next, please. I'm gonna be highlighting a lot of these wonderful pictures and the headlines that I'll be talking about. Again, here we see students being engaged. What I really love about this picture, which happens to be on the right-hand side, is these are our Southeast Asian students, and they actually got together with one of their teachers at the high school and also with Sita, who happens to be an instructional coach. And their whole thing is that we need to tell a little bit more about our story and about our Southeast Asian culture. So they created lessons and they taught the middle school students. I always love it when I see students teaching other students. All right, next, please. In this picture on the left-hand side, these are teachers receiving dyslexia training, and then in the middle, we're planning the kindness initiative, and then on the bottom left-hand side is what Jeremy Brooks had talked about, the robotics and the competition where our students stole it away, and of course, our wonderful music that always happens, the artwork that is always occurring, and then in the middle, we have the solar eclipse that occurred yesterday, and I thought that the Science Center did an amazing job, both Wendy and Sarah and also Sean, kudos to all of them. Next slide, please. Here we have, and we'll talk later about this, about Carrie Lamprey and also Here we have, and we'll talk later about this, about Carrie Lamprey and also about Emerson, who actually went to go visit some of our students who, that we have in Guatemala. And they, here they are, they're setting up a school for a village. How wonderful that we continue to, you know, just help children from around the world. These are two of our educators. Next, please. Here again, our adult ESL classes have begun. And for those of you who don't know, we are in exciting chick hatching that is occurring right now in our kindergarten classes. And there you have Wendy and she's talking about, you know, where chickens come from and, you know, what happens to chickens and where the eggs come from. All right, next, please. All right, so again, we talked about the Students' Opportunity Act. One thing that we've been talking about is also in one of the pictures is we are engaged in a teacher diversification pilot with the Burlington team. That is a state initiative and with our work with Dr. Chris Taylor. Next, please. Again, as you saw in one of the pictures, the Director of Mental Health, thank you very much, Chrissy Concepcion, and Joyce from Help Us. We're putting together a kindness month and this is going to be rolled out sometime in May for all community members to participate in. We're going to be having kindness activities that all adults, community members can participate in the entire Burlington community. Next, please. Just wanted to say that we are again putting together the hiring committee and next steps for our lead DEI position at the high school. And then again, attended the DUCY Civil Rights Training Session with the Director of Special Education for the upcoming audit on tier-focused monitoring that's going to be occurring in the 2024-2025 school year. Next, please. Attended the all-band concert for BPS. And as you saw that, teachers were provided with dyslexia training. And we're also going to be meeting with Dr. Gail Lovett, who is going to be doing a district-wide curriculum review of the BPS literacy program pre-K through 12. Next, please. Again, working with Dr. Kateri Thunder. And in particular, that group is working on looking at Algebra I and what the middle school is going to look like and summer curriculum work. I do want to say this is that this year, what we have done in this, and this assessment will be taken in May for those students who wish from the middle school to skip over Algebra I and to take geometry as a freshman, there will be another data point. Still, parents can decide if they want to opt out, if they want their children to go into geometry after taking this assessment, but it will be another data point provided to parents so that they know how students will fare if they decide to skip Algebra I and their children and enter into geometry. Next, please. Again, what's been going on with our technology is that we've had virtual reality expeditions provide virtual reality experiences for real and virtual locations using VR headsets. The digital learning coaches visited Westwood Public School to participate in a technology evaluation and collaboration program created in partnership with Burlington, Westwood and Milton Public Schools. Next, please. We are participating in a national AI and education webinar about how to use artificial intelligence in the middle school and high school levels to better prepare our students for college and careers. And really want to thank Dennis Villano for his work with that. And also wanted to thank Mr. Leroy Wong for his 3D printing and the GG trophies to celebrate ST Math. Next, please. Elementary and middle school reading teachers are mapping out keys to literacy professional development dates. Also at the same time, I want to say thank you to Emerson and Carrie Lamprey for volunteering in the second grade of one of the public schools and began to establish a summer academy program for elementary-age students in one of the villages where our current newcomer students previously lived and attended school. Next, please. Again, the adult ESL spring classes have begun. Next slide, please. Also, again, wanted to thank Chrissy Concepcion for all of her hard work and her team on the March 21st Professional Development Day in which they focused on social-emotional learning of wayfinders, staff wellness, and the intersection of social-emotional learning and culturally responsive and sustaining pedagogy. Next, please. The Science Department attended DUCY with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Science District Leaders Network meeting. And there was also a women's leadership conference that you saw in one of the pictures. Want to thank Sean Musselman for the giant map day for all kindergarten through five as they practice map skills. And they've been focusing on the continent of Africa and what it means to travel as a human endeavor. Next, please. Just a reminder, want to thank also Christine Chicalini for her vision in this and also Alice Buchaman, in which 10 teachers will sit and take their certification examination and OG in May. Unified basketball will be beginning its third season. And Special Olympics is scheduled for May 10th in Wilmington. Wilmington?
Wilmington.
Wilmington. I'll get that straight one day. All right, next, please. Want to thank that we have a lot of virtual meetings with the Massachusetts Educational Technology Administrator Associations, specialists regarding DUCY reporting requirements. Next, please. And Business and Finance Team, really want to thank Nicole Kasha and her team for attending union negotiation meetings or custodial and cafeteria. They completed an audit on fiscal year '23, end of the year, and there were no findings. Congratulations. All right, next, please, Communications Team. I know that our communications officer, Laura Angelo, has been working hard with Nicole Mondello for the summer enrichment registration forms and post. And registration for the summer program ends on May 14th. Next, please. Also in the Communications Team, she's been hard at work at helping to assist with a vector valuation and PD tracking platform. Next, please, with the Human Resource Team. Want to thank folks in the Human Resources, Joanne Faust, for coordinating our first summer jobs fair for BHS and other local students to learn about summer jobs within Burlington. Next slide, please, with the Nursing Team. They've started their annual application for the medication administration waivers for the mass DPH. And the school nurses have been assisting in the school puberty classes for the females at all elementary schools. Next, please, and the Operations Team. Bob Kuna and his team, he has done a lot of stuff. He's participated in the Frances Wyman Burlington High School school building meetings, working with lab to install a kitchen in the BHS classroom. He attended the Recreation Committee meeting to discuss the middle school's field improvement, met with the AppGeo to explore routing and redistricting software. He is piloting a new filter water system in Central Office in which the bubblers are now coming back, thank you very much, and had vendors on site to quote, "the removal of unhealthy trees on the Pine Glen property." Next, please, the Technology Team is maintaining prompt response time to help. Dust tickets while short-staffed during to planned and unplanned vacations and continuing to refresh summer devices for seamless transition from old to new devices. And finally, just want to end with this beautiful picture of both Carrie Lamprey and also Emerson Perez. Here they are. They're hard at work at helping to scrub the school, paint the school, build the school so that these children, I don't know if you can see in the background, their little hands and hearts, are just so grateful to have a space in which they can learn. And that just happens to be who we are because we're one team, we're one family, and we care about students from all around the world. You can't, you can't beat it. It's good stuff. And I only was one minute over behind.
Madam Chair, again, Madam Chair, Dr. Chen gave me an assignment. So a couple more things to add to the, to the Journey to Cares briefly is I want to congratulate Krista Anderson and Danielle Truvey, our high school business teachers. They were awarded a Innovation Pathway Grant in Business and Finance. So that's a $75,000 award from the state. You may be familiar with the Innovation Pathway we have in computer science. So this will allow for more opportunities for students, more internships, and it's a great honor for them to get this award. So thank you to their efforts to that. Secretary Tutwiler called and asked me to sit on an AI education working group for the state. So I've been, it's mostly higher ed, but we're sitting there and trying to better understand the potential impact of AI on education. Is it going to be something that we can, to enhance what we do or something that people feel threatened by? So I think that's kind of the conversation. And there's lots of school communities and school committees that are trying to think about AI policies, and it may be a little bit early to do that. But again, there's a lot of thought going into the impact of artificial intelligence on teaching and learning. And again, we're not there. And finally, I do want to congratulate Dr. Carrie Purchase. Dr. Carrie Purchase was offered and has accepted the Assistant Superintendentcy for Teaching and Learning in the Bellingham Public School District. It's always an honor when someone who has worked with you sort of moves on in their career. I always, again, just believe people who have choices and have contributed so, so much to Burlington. Again, I just take such pride in her, her achievements. So wanted to wish her well and again, say thank you. We'll try to invite her back so the committee can thank her properly. My mentioning that also has a second intention is the spot hasn't been filled. We haven't manufactured any middle school principal. We're not moving anybody. We're going to go through a sort of a full hiring process. Dr. Chen and I still need to make some time to speak with the staff. There'll be opportunities for students and parents to be involved in the selection process. We understand that it's May and if the pool isn't, doesn't produce someone who we think can really step in and do the job, then we'll certainly look to provide an interim principal while we take more time next year. So again, we're not in a rush. We want to find a good match. We want to look for the best quality, but there's been no determination as to who is going to step in. So if you hear anything to that, you know, someone saying, oh, that they've already picked someone, that's just not true. We're, we're going to go through a full process and there will be an opportunity for lots of people to participate in that process moving forward. But again, I think the reason for this is to congratulate Dr. Purchase. That's what's setting up this opportunity is that to congratulate her for her appointment to the Assistant Superintendent position in Bellingham. So congratulations, Dr. Purchase.
I just had a couple of comments, if you mind. I was excited to see this teacher diversification pilot. I think we've talked a lot about helping students belong and helping families become more engaged. And I think when they can find themselves represented in our teachers and our administrators, that that goes a long way. So happy to hear more about that and how it goes. I will look it up as well. Also AppGeo, we can convene a Transportation Committee meeting if, if that may, if we want to talk about that. And the question, the DEI position, I was sick the night, I think we talked about it. That reports to you or Mr. Sullivan?
It's going to report to both of us.
Okay.
This particular person is housed, it is housed in the high school, but is working very closely on my team. So it's going to be, it's going to be both of us working with this person.
Okay.
Jeremy, you got anything? Megan? Any questions, Catherine?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. And Eric?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for moving on. We have the monthly financial report and we'd usually, again, Ms. Kasha, is there anything on the financial report that sticks out or that you would like to point out to the committee? And then I'm sure you can answer any questions the committee has.
No, there's, there's nothing I'd like to bring to the attention. All of our accounts are in good standing and no concerns.
I had, maybe I ask it here, maybe we ask it with the other budget, but a lot of things seem to move from revolving accounts. Is that because we had just large dollar amounts in the revolving accounts? I didn't have the time to go back and look at the revolving accounts, but. Do we have large balances in some of the revolving accounts, I guess is my question? Yeah, I didn't have time to go back. Well, so some of these budget expense cuts are from iPad revolving account.
Oh, next to the budget.
Yeah, from iPad revolving. So are these coming? I didn't have a chance to go back and see the balance because we got this like 45 minutes ago, but are we having excess balances in those accounts? Is that?
We, I think we have some balances in those accounts and we're not spending them all down, but we're also trying to present you a budget and guidelines so we can talk about how we, how we accomplish that.
Okay.
And I think Nicole took some money from some of the revolving accounts appropriately to, to make sure that we came in a guideline. So we can, we'll highlight those specifically for you.
Okay, sure.
Anything else? Mr. Moran, do you have any questions about the, about the monthly update?
No, just that I would also like to get the same copy of what was previously requested.
Which was what? Steve, what had you?
The monies, the monies that were used from revolving accounts to fund the operating budget.
Yes, Mr. Moran, we can go through that.
Steve, I sent that to prior to the meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on the monthly revolving account summary? That's what we're really looking at right this second. Pretty good. So questions, we'll move on.
Plus property?
Thank you.
Before we get to the budget?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Muse Department has purchased some new instruments to replace older equipment. It's being requested that the list of used instruments be declared as surplus property by the school committee. If declared as surplus by the committee, the equipment will be placed on a municipal bid site for sale and any funds from the sale would be returned back to the town as required by law. If not declared surplus, the items will remain in storage at the school until declared by the committee as surplus. So please, we need the room. It's recommended the school committee vote to declare the items as surplus property, the items as described as surplus property.
Is there a motion?
I move that we declare the list of used instruments as surplus property.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
What are they? Oh, I didn't see that.
There was a list included.
Is it further down? Okay.
It was a separate attachment.
Oh.
I think lots of drums.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of, what's a snare?
A drum. Smaller drum. Okay.
Okay, any questions on this before we vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to declare these musical instruments as surplus property? Catherine?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
She votes aye. And that's unanimous. Okay, the next item is the Fox Hill Building Committee update. Melissa?
Yeah, we, yeah, we met yesterday. One big develop, we're working on the schedule to basically get our schematic design approved by the school committee and thus MSBA. So we have some upcoming meetings. A big one is we are going to submit the project for cost estimation, so actual materials and room sizes and things like that. So we'll get an exact number that we will submit to the MSBA. That number will be coming at the end of May. And then we're planning a community meeting on June 12th. So that has already hit the town website. So if folks want to add that to their calendars, we'll work on doing some more communication. But I know getting that date out, there was nothing on the town calendar that day. It's a Wednesday night, June 12th. It'll be a fully remote meeting and it will be recorded so folks can watch later. I think that is all.
Okay, anything else about last night's meeting? Anyone have any more to add? No? Okay, thank you for the update. The Burlington High School Building Committee update. Catherine, do you have anything for that?
No, other than our next meeting is Thursday at 6:30.
Madam Chair, the, the designer, Tape and the OPM, we had our first visioning meeting on Burlington High School this morning. And that was with the central office and high school leadership team. So the same. So the same process that we went through for Fox Hill. So we're starting to talk about, um, more philosophical questions about high school education and things like that. And they asked us to schedule an opportunity for about three two-hour sessions with an expanded group that includes teachers, parents, students. So we have those dates scheduled. So we will be reaching out to the high school, middle school, elementary community. Really want a whole bunch of different people to be involved in that process. There's some, there's some in-person and also some virtual opportunities for people to participate. We'd like people to commit to all three if they're going to participate, but we can probably have people observe because it's a public, it'll be a public sort of thing. But if they're going to participate, it's a, it's a process. All three are connected. So it's a, it's, they're not three repetitive sessions, they're three building sessions. So we will get, people should be looking for that information, but it'll be an opportunity. Again, we're a long way from talking about colors and design. This is mostly about sort of what you want high school to be and the role of high school in the community. So that helps guide the designer moving forward. So again, that work has started. Bob, you also have members from the design team. They're doing some sort of digital mapping of the high school?
Yeah, thank you to the chair. So on Monday, myself and maintenance met with a digital mapping company as part of Tape's and OPM's team as well, too. Today, we met with an architectural surveying company to start looking at the outside of the property. So we'll be scanning the inside and the outside of the property, getting to know where, you know, our property lies and so forth. Um, we have a company coming tomorrow to meet with us in regards to structural engineering. Um, and over April vacation, we will continue interior scanning. Also, we will be looking to do some geotech and boring samples in about twelve places on the property, high school property. So those are all underway and we're trying to schedule those and currently acting on them.
Any questions? Uh, what about the educational plan? Has that, have you started that or?
Um, we have started it and the high school had done a lot of the educational playing, planning through their portrait of graduate work already. So we're building off that. But in terms of the scheduling and actual program, we're sort of, that's sort of where the visioning is starting. And then we will, the end result of the visioning process will be a program document.
I, I know that on the, um, on the Fox Hill, um, you did most of it yourself, but you did a really good job and I'm wondering if that's your approach this time?
No, I, again, I didn't do most of it. My staff does everything and they did a phenomenal job. We'll involve them and the high school programming as well and we'll, we'll put it together and the committee will see sort of the document as well. The high school programming is going to be a little bit, um, more complex in that we have community components that are also part of the the high school. And so we need to sort of talk about whether, again, we think BCAT, for instance, is an asset to have in the high school. But if the community wants to continue with that part of the program, then the designer would need to make sure that they incorporate space for programs like that, the integrated preschool, which is a highly academic program. There you go, Deb. So, um, so we would just want to make sure that the program reflects what the committee wants to see inside the space moving forward. And so that's, um, you know, that's kind of what the the document drives the design. So you would have an opportunity to contribute to that.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're really getting somewhere on both projects and that's very.
Exhausting.
Exciting.
Yes, no, it's wonderful.
It's really good.
Ma'am.
Anything else on this?
Um, yes, the, Bob has also worked to, we are submitting a statement of interest for the high school. We feel like it's a long shot, but we also feel it's something that we we should do. Um, MSBA does say that with an active project, which is Fox Hill, they sort of, the odds of them approving a second project are long. Um, I do think the middle school and memorial school were considered a joint project separated by a road. So there are opportunities to to have concurrent projects. And what I hate to do is not have something submitted and then have someone at some point say, oh, had you submitted. So I don't have high hopes, but we have to go through the same process moving forward. For those of you, this is maybe the thirteenth time I've read this statement, but it's MSBA language that the school committee has to approve. Bob, you read this language to the Board of Selectmen last night and they they approved this as well?
Yeah, Select Board voted this five zero zero.
Yes, correct.
They supported it five zero zero.
Okay. And then our deadline for submission is April? Twelfth. Twelfth. Okay.
So we have plenty of time.
So again, Madam Chair, with your permission, could I read the resolution? So be it resolved, having convened in an open meeting on April ninth, twenty twenty four, prior to the statement of interest submission closing date, the School Committee of Burlington, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April twenty twenty four for the Burlington High School located at one twenty-three Cambridge Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. For priority number five, replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems. And priority number seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the Burlington School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. It's recommended the committee vote on the MSBA statement of interest as read.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the statement of interest as read by Dr. Conti.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, did any discussion?
I just have one comment. Um, I appreciate the sentiment of we have nothing to lose here, so I'm not against submitting it. But I think I just want to set the expectation even further that the MSBA states that Fox Hill is our priority in their system and they only have one priority. So it's a longer than long shot, but I do appreciate we can toss it in there in case there only one school applies. Um, but fourteen's maybe not the charm here.
Hard not to agree with that, Melissa. Is there any other comment? Catherine, anything?
No.
All right.
All good.
All those in favor? Jeremy Brooks?
Aye.
Melissa Massardo?
Aye, you're making it harder now.
I know, I know. Megan Novoicik?
Yes.
Catherine Bond?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So that's unanimous.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. And Bob, that's all we need to submit the statement of interest? All right, great, thank you. And Bob, thanks you for your work. What?
If I could just add one thing. So I will upload the form tomorrow and then the chair of the school committee, along with you, Dr. Conti and Paul Sager, Reno Town Manager, will receive an email that they'll have to electronically sign. And then that will be the completion and then the submittal of the statement of interest.
Okay, we'll look for that email. Thank you.
Okay, next item. Tell us what's going on with the Pine Glen School. We want to keep that front and center.
Um, again, Madam Chair, there are exceptional things happening every day at the Pine Glen School and the classrooms. I think the, um, in terms of the Pine Glen building itself, um, we will be presenting several warrant articles that pertain to Pine Glen in this year's budget for town meeting approval. I think our number one priority, as we've discussed in the past, is air conditioning the Pine Glen building and completing that project. Bob, if town meeting, if we're fortunate enough that they approve our warrant, that process is already moving forward because we have a vendor who we've already selected in terms, in regards to HVAC and quickly getting out of my depth, but we we have someone ready to go. Is that correct?
We do have someone ready to go. Uh, we are scoping up the project to make sure that we can start as soon as town meeting hopefully supports this project. Uh, we do have some funding already available. We just don't want to commit to the full project without the full support from town meeting. Um, so this is not a project that we have to wait till July one for as a typical warrant article request. Um, so we can begin this right after town meeting hopefully supports this.
Anyone have any input?
They're going to do this with the kids in there?
Um, there's some other work that can be done after hours, but we have to at least commit to the materials in order for them to get them on site first.
I just, because two of my grandkids go to Pine Glen, I happened to be there for a musical event one day and Bob was there and he took my husband and me around. I hadn't really seen the school in that much depth before, but it's really a nice, very pleasant, bright school. Like going, we were standing out by all those windows going out to the playground. It's a, it's a very nice little school. Moving on, uh, any other comments on Pine Glen? No. The next item is, it's time for the budget hearing?
No, not yet. It's, uh, we have two budget sessions, our last two. So, um, I'd like to invite up, um, Ms. Chicalini, Ms. Clark and Ms. Bukaman. Alice, come on up, please. They're going to talk about the Burlington Early Childhood Center and special education, operating and accommodated. So these are the last two sections of the budget. Uh, we've gone through everything else. So want to give them a chance to, um, present and for you to ask questions. And then, Madam Chair, we can have the public hearing after.
Yep.
After their presentation. So Deb, I think you're online first or Christina, are you going to set everything up? All right, thank you, Christina, for being here. Um, I said eight thirty, I'm doing pretty well.
Impressed. So, um, I'd like to say, as you know, it takes a village. Student success regardless of ability is because of the combination of many factors. And for me, I'd like to thank the hardworking teachers, the instructional assistants, the principals, CAF workers, custodians, coaches, advisors and my fellow administrators and most importantly, the parents for working so hard for their students. I'd like to also introduce Alice Bookmahan, who is the Director of Special Education Programming. Um, as you know, that was a new position that was posted because of last year. And so I would like to just introduce her since it is now April and you haven't had a chance to really meet her. So if you have anything to say?
So hi, I'm Alice Bookmahan. Um, nice to meet you all. Um, I just wanted to share a little bit about what I've been doing this year. Currently, we have nearly seventy-five students within our special education programs in the district. So the first program that I've really kind of taken a look at and am doing, currently doing a review for is the Developmental Skills Center, which is hosted by Glen. Um, we have sixty-four percent of our kids make up that program. Some of the things that I'm currently looking at, can you guys hear me? Sorry.
Yeah.
For folks online.
Sorry, you could have said that, sorry. Um, all right. So vertical alignment, we have programming at the BECC, we have it at Pine Glen. We currently have it at the Marshall Simons Middle School. So now we have to start thinking about those students who are in seventh grade going into the Burlington High School. So we're starting to look at that. Um, we're looking at any adjustments to practice that can be made for student success. We're looking at streamlining our procedures right now, looking at ways to collaborate with and share out with community resources. Um, I'm working on policies and procedures for all the programs. We currently have systems in place, but I'm trying to create more formalized procedures for them. We, I've written a special education instructional assistant manual this year, um, working on an onboarding manual for our instructional assistants and then updating the special education manual. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Alice, you've also, you've also done a lot of hiring because.
Yes.
Yes, because we've had, um, I think we do a very good job onboarding and training our instructional assistants and many of them get hired out as teachers in other districts. So it creates some, some turnover. And if the hiring is happening at sort of off calendar times, October, December, it makes it challenging to find people, first of all, bring them in and then get them trained up. So again, I know you spend a lot of your time trying to find the best people to work with, um, work with our kids. So, um, don't discount as much time because I I know you're, you do a lot of interviewing and you're seeking to make sure that we have the right people and the right jobs.
Agreed. So I guess we'll go right into the budget. And so I'd like to start with the operating budget. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to review it or have any questions, but you'll notice that there's just a slight increase. It's a two percent and that is strictly mainly for, um, our home hospital tutoring. Unfortunately, I've seen an increase in hospitalizations and the need for us to provide tutoring and education for those students. So I want to make sure that we are set for next year. I'm hoping that we won't need all of that money, but, um, we never know. And then, um, the other increase is in our legal fees and it's only just because, um, our legal advisors have just raised their prices. So I just want to make sure that we're covered there, too.
Again, Madam Chair, just stepping back a bit. So the special education budget exists both in the operating budget and the accommodated account, depending on the the program. And, um, so I think what was just described was the operating budget. So, um, so that's sort of going to be contained in the, in the larger budget. And we have accommodated, um, the accommodated budget to present as well. So your operational budget, you said, went up?
Just two percent.
Two percent.
Okay.
Any questions?
Great. So why don't we get into the accommodated account? And as we all know, this is a gift. This is a gift from the town. We would, I can't find the words to describe how thankful I am. And I think that, um, you know, our special education students and family are so grateful for this account. But, um, it, has there been an increase? There, there has, there's a few requests in here. Um, one for me is another BCBA to be working within our programs. Currently, we have one BCBA working for the district and, um, she is currently overseeing all of our programs, which have grown as through the years, as you all know, and working with forty-six students currently in our programs. And just to give you an idea, this is data that she reviews and adapts for each student quarterly. So imagine doing this for forty-six students and making sure that they're getting what they need. And so when we're looking at programs from surrounding districts and the level of how many BCBAs they have and the amount of students that they are working and consulting with, we are obviously, well, I am saying, we are far below, um, surrounding districts. Lexington has seven, Bedford has four, Arlington has five, Watertown two, Belmont three, Winchester two. So I think that, um, for us to continue to make sure that our programs are still as awesome as ever and getting the students what they need, I think it's important that we, um, make sure that we're supporting them with another BCBA, who also, by the way, works with the preschool as well. We're also looking for additional IAs. The programs are again expanding, the middle school, even though we're not opening up another classroom for the DSC based on the numbers, but we will be looking for more support. So we're looking for more instructional assistants to help with that. Um, we are also looking at, based on the numbers at the DSC, um, at the, at Pine Glen, the possibility of needing a couple of more instructional assistants there as well. So that is where I I see a lot of this budget increase coming in, at least from my end.
Just, just Madam Chair, Christina, before we move on, um, as the school committee was aware, last year, I think was the first year the DSC program was moved to the middle school? Or am I losing track of years?
You're losing track of years. So that last year, we opened up, we opened up a fifth classroom at, well, this year, we opened up a fifth classroom at Pine Glen. And this year, we opened up another classroom at the middle school. So we, we did open up two more classrooms.
Right, but the enrollment at the middle school was always projected to increase. And I think we did tell that to the committee that we were seeing
Right.
more elementary kids who are going to be middle school age. And so I think when we first started, the numbers were relatively low. But you had really talked about in the years we're in now, um, there are going to be more students and therefore the need for more instructional assistance.
Right, and then we will probably be projecting, um, as she continues with her reviews, we're, we're thinking that there's a possibility of projecting an opening of another connections type of classroom, which is. which is our intellectual classroom at the middle school. So we will be expanding.
Yeah, and again, just so there's no surprise for the committee, as these kids age up, they're going to be coming to the high school, and we're going to be needing staff and support staff at the high school so that, so that these students stay in district. And there's always a cost avoidance conversation here. Families want their children to stay in town, and the programming that we provide, we feel is very high quality, or we will be providing is very high quality, but we need the staff to do that. So I don't want anyone to be surprised when all of a sudden we have a request for high school staff as the high school, as the kids age, as the kids age up.
Correct.
And then we also have the lab program. I know that's in the accommodated at the middle school as well.
The, the lab program?
At the middle school, the medically fragile program that also grew up from Francis Wyman as well, right? And is that in its second year at the middle school, too?
Oh, yes, it is in its second year at the middle school, correct.
Again, I'm losing track of time, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We also, of course, my budget, let's be honest, is a moving target just because of, we do not have numbers of potential move-ins, and because we are well-known to be a great district, especially for special education services and programs. I, I hear, as people move in, that they come here for specifically that. So it's, it's another need, why we need to make sure that we're, we are continuing to grow to make sure that the needs of the students that we currently have are met, but also as the numbers could possibly project to be more, we want to make sure that we're providing the appropriate services for all of them. Also, the BECC is in the accommodated account, so go ahead.
Hi, everyone. So I want to echo Christina's thanks. It is really a gift to have this account. We don't know what we're going to get year to year. I know that a lot of people can say that, but we're getting students for their first school experience. That's the majority of our population, so we really are thankful. Having this account allows us to plan for those unexpected things that come up, and it really is a comfort to our teachers that they don't have to worry about getting what they need to provide those services to all of our students. You know, our, we have a very talented and skilled staff, working with our three, four, and five-year-olds. It's, there's a lot of energy down there, and they use up their energy during the day. They're very, very good. I am not asking for any new positions this year. Last year and the year before, you were very generous to us. Last year, we asked for a .5 ELL teacher, and that's really been a very, very big help to us. Right now, about 40% of our students on their home language survey have a language other than English spoken as well. So we've really, really expanded that. We have 17 different languages right now. The DESI, they ask us to screen all of our preschool students, but there really was no mandate to do anything about that screening. So now that we have a dedicated person with us, she's able to go in and do groups, do some push-in, do some communication with parents, and she's also bilingual, so that's really helped us out with communicating with families as well, so thank you for that. The year before you, we had asked for a school psychologist, and we were able to hire a full-time school psychologist. He has helped with all the testing. We used to have them come down and do some of our testing from all the other schools, so now we have a dedicated person to do our testing, but she's also running weekly social-emotional lessons in every classroom with the teachers and helping with the Wayfinder curriculum that we're doing. And that's really been a really, really nice person to have and a resource for our teachers to have. Regarding the rest of my budget, there's no increase in anything. We were able to move some things from one sub-account to another to get all of our needs met. So I think we're good, Nicole.
Again, Madam Chair, and through the chair, Deb, Burlington was obviously a shelter-in-place site for the state, and we, I think we had about 40 or 50 families come in, resulting in some students. Again, my memory being what it is, my understanding is we also had some preschool students who were, who were aging into the preschool age that were coming from there?
So, so the way we read the McKinney Vento, preschool students were prioritized, not just because they had a disability or anything. So we were able to take all of the students who came in, and they were able to be placed. We had room in our afternoon. We have, I want to say we have 13 families that are, 13 students that we were able to offer spots in our afternoon program and provide transportation for them as well, because we already have transportation, so that's what we were able to do.
So again, thank you for that.
Well, again, and thank you for the EL position, because that really helped us a lot with that when that first, when the EL first came in.
Any questions? Anyone have any questions? Melissa? No? Jeremy? Megan?
I am excited to see the BCBA position on this list. I know it was a priority of Mary Hood's many years ago when she first started. Talking with her through the CPAC, she was very interested in getting more BCBAs involved, and I'm excited to see more aides going in and instructional assistants at the middle school level as well. I think those will be very beneficial, based on the conversations that I've had with parents recently. So thank you for that.
Anything, Catherine?
No. I'm good, thanks for asking.
Okay. I just have a couple of, I wanted to ask Christina, do you, it's been quite a few years now with the, the DSC program and growing into the middle school. Do you have a sense that people are happily staying in the in-town programs now? I'm sure not everyone is, but, you know, some people really probably want certain out-of-district placements that they may not be able to get, or hard to get, or whatever. But do you get the general sense that our doing this is working?
I, I do. I actually find that most of our families are, are staying. I, I actually don't think that we've had any requesting an out-of-district placement since the DSC has been started. I mean, we may have had a few.
Yes.
Don't, don't get me wrong, but, but I would say that, for the most part, you know, even some of the ones that have requested it, I would say that as the program has evolved and their students have grown through the program, and they've seen the progress that has been made, and for them to continue to be a part of the community, I think that these, these families, and I am projecting my own thoughts on this, but because there hasn't been any recent requests, I would say that, that it has been extremely successful.
And so the, the requests that you have, the BCBA and some instructional assistance, well, those, because of the programs that they would cover, are they all in the accommodated account? Is any of that in the, the regular budget?
So they are mostly in the accommodated account, because the, the positions are for the programs themselves. Now, we have had, our current BCBA have, has done some FBAs, Functional Behavior Behaviors Assessments, for some of our students who are not in programs, as, truly as a favor to me. But I think, along with making sure that the data and the programs are, are working, I think that spreading the wealth and going from four different schools to be able to split that as well, it would just make working with specific teachers and teams of, teams of teachers more cohesive.
In addition to the, the BCBA, do you also have contracted services to BCBA help?
We do, we do have contracted services through BC, for an outside agency, we do.
Okay. And do you see that changing, going up, going down, or just staying the same?
I'm a moving target in my budget, so...
Oh, yeah. I know.
I, I would say it's actually going down, to be honest with you. And I think even this year specifically, it went down, because as you may recall, we had decided to end our target program, which was our social-emotional program at the elementary school, and we wanted kids to remain in their home school. And we had the teacher of that program essentially be the coach for our general education teachers and special education teachers to be working primarily with, with those kids. And the initial data that we have is that it's working, based on feedback, not only from principals, but also from the teachers that, that the teacher is working with, with some of those students. So I think that it, as we continue to move forward, you know, there could be even a possibility of looking at programs and making sure that they're in, that more students are in their home schools, especially at the elementary level. Obviously, not so much at the middle or high. I think it's important that they remain in their home schools, part of their community, part of their peer relationships. So, because I look at them primarily as general education students first, just needing assistance. And if we can make sure that we're giving them the assistance and the things that they need in their environment, I don't see any reason why they cannot be successful.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work and presentation.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything else? I guess we're good. So that brings us to the budget hearing. Am I jumping the gun again?
You are not. We're at the budget, we are at the budget hearing. So I can read the, the legal notice to open the, the public hearing. And then, Nicole, do we want to, we have some specific, I think, actually, Mr. Morin wanted to make a statement, and then we had some specific numbers to...
There could be other comments.
To, to, to go through. So, Madam Chair, with your permission, we need a motion to open a public hearing. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter 71, Section 38N of the General Laws, that a public hearing on the proposed 2024-2025 school budget will be held on Tuesday, April 9th, 2024, following the school committee meeting as a virtual meeting via WebEx Technology. Meeting access information, again, was read at the beginning part of the meeting, is available at Burlington.org. And so with that, Madam Chair, if you could ask to, for a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to open a public hearing for the 24-25 school budget. All those in favor? Catherine?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are in a public budget hearing right now, and I know Mr. Morin wants to speak, so I'll call on him first. Steve, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Just an observation. The purpose of the public budget session is to have the public to participate. It would be helpful to have the materials on the website available ahead of time for them to participate with. I noticed that in the 2025 budget, it's still listed as the draft, and the cuts that were made for the operating budget aren't published on the website. And then second, the accommodated account is not available on the website for the public to review prior to the open budget session. And then finally, just, you know, having it, at least, I, I'm not sure if there's any particular legal requirements for how long the material should be available prior to the open budget session, but I feel that, you know, with the lack of this information, it's hard to get the public to participate in the budget session. Thank you.
Okay. That, and maybe we should have more information out before the budget hearing. Is there anyone, Martha, come on up.
Hi, Martha Simon. I want to second what Mr. Morin just said. I think it is really difficult to follow at this stage. That being said, this part of it, I think, has been difficult over the years and is continues, obviously, tonight. I also, though, want to remind people in town who are interested in the school budget that this is the fourth or fifth session in public that the school committee's had about the budget. It's a public, open discussion where we've had presentations and discussions about the various cost centers, school buildings, programming and such. And I want to encourage people who are interested to get involved earlier on if they have concerns about the budget. And town meeting members are invited. Anybody can come to the school committee and participate, and listen and ask questions. I think this last step that Mr. Morin pointed out is, is lacking. But I believe this, in the years I was on the school committee, I don't know if anyone ever came to the public hearing. So I, I just want to encourage people to participate in the public process of the budget being discussed by the school committee. Usually it starts, I think we were a little late this year. Did we start in February this year, Nicole? I don't know. Yeah?
I'd have to look back.
Okay, so, but, but it's been a couple of months, there's been several sessions, and tonight is a public hearing, and I'm the only one here speaking beyond Mr. Morin, who's our Ways and Means Representative. So I want to thank the people who put all the work into the budget, and I'm interested to hear more about how it got pared down to the guideline. Thank you.
Jen, do you wish to speak?
Okay, thank you.
So come out of the public here? No, you want to stay in the public hearing?
Yeah, let's stay in the public hearing while we have some conversation about the numbers that are in front of you and what the process is. And then we can, we can close out the, the public hearing sort of at, at the end, would be my recommendation. While there is a budget calendar and a budget process, what I want to stress to the committee is we're working on the budget 12 months out of, out of the year. So the committee gets a monthly report in terms of expenditures. We're out, we're tracking all those expenditures fairly carefully. We're looking at where we're over-expending if needed, and you'll see some of the adjustments we make on the next year's budget. So I know we have a fiscal year, I know it starts July 1 and ends June 30, but our thinking doesn't stop, it, it's, it's not a year-to-year or a budget calendar-to-budget calendar. We're, we're really looking at this sort of over time. So you all participated, you heard from all the cost center leaders, district, district leaders, principals. They put together their requests, they presented them to the school committee, and that was presented in the school committee, the superintendent's budget that you saw at $67.5 million, that was the sort of top number that you saw. And I think that represented roughly, what, a 9% or close to a 9% over last year's, over last year's budget. So that was unadulterated, nothing, we didn't tell anyone to hold back. And I honestly didn't see anything in those requests that I thought was unreasonable or unneeded. The town provided us with a 4.5% guideline, and so that's the number that is next on the sheet. And the delta there was $2.8 million essentially that we had to reduce from the cost center requests that you, you, you received. So again, the hard part over the last few weeks has been trying to bring our budget sort of back down to, to, to guideline. So always, we have some context here that we explain to folks. We have five of six unsettled contracts. We have contracts settled with the instructional assistance, but all of our other contracts are unsettled, which means there is a lot of variability in this budget. We have to set aside money to project what we believe would cover a negotiated settlement. But in order to bargain, that number can't be fixed. We all, we all have to say that that number may, may change. So again, we're reserving a part of our fiscal '25 budget to hopefully allow for bargaining to take place successfully. So that's a big variable here. You all know that our transportation contract ended, and we got a transportation contract back that is going to, that has a 16% increase over last year that impacted the operating budget. I think I also told you all that the ESAR funding that was ending for COVID this year, and that we have been phasing that out, and so we had to make up for a loss of some federal dollars, which was also a revenue hit that we needed to, to account for in this year's operating budget. So those are sort of the contextual features of this year's budget. I think we had close to 19 new positions requested. And given that we were so far over guideline, we removed all new position requests. Again, our enrollment is generally steady, and in fact, we're seeing a slightly decrease in registrations at kindergarten. That's always a dangerous bet, because registrations could be late, but we're seeing lower registrations at this time. Robin Milliano, who's spoken to this committee, does do a great job. Our principals do a great job. Deb does a great job from the Early Childhood Center. We really try to recruit, make sure parents are registering their kindergarten children early so we know who's coming in so we can plan for that. We did keep in the Francis Wyman ESL teacher. I think you saw in the data, there was about an 83% increase of newcomer students. And they're primarily hitting Francis Wyman because of some of the high-density housing that are zoned for Francis Wyman. And then, we also looked at some retirements and section count reductions. Section count reductions are looking at class sizes. And if we believe we can maintain smaller class sizes, given our enrollment, we may make some reductions. Our objective there, my objective there, is always to maintain jobs. And we try to do as much of this through retirement, through attrition, as possible. We don't have the $891,000 broken out because Nicole and I were working on this up until about an hour before the meeting tonight. I haven't had a chance to sit down with principals or talk to any staff who may be impacted. So this is just a numerical projection now to try to get us down to guideline. Obviously, at a future school committee meeting, if you wanted to see a breakdown of where, what we were doing and sort of how we got to that and who's retiring, we can certainly go through that level of detail. And then, the $128,000 is something that I don't like to do. But I think in this year's budget, because of the unsettled contract and the negotiated settlement line, in order for us to present a school committee budget at guideline, we are using some school choice dollars for, did we decide on expense side? On the salary side. So we're using $128,000, $129,000 essentially out of the school choice account for salary. I don't like using the revolving account for operating because we're essentially setting up $129,000 deficit moving into next year's budget. We think we're going to be able to make that up. But again, I think it's not a habit I want to get into. But we really tried to find every other possibility to reduce the $2.8 million from the initial superintendent's budget. And we, what was remaining after we sort of did everything we possibly could was $129,000. The expense cuts that you see there are relatively straightforward. We feel we can make up these services elsewhere. Ms. Masardo, you asked where the money was coming out of the revolving account. You can see that we're using some revolving account money for computer supplies and some IT stuff that was from the iPad revolving account, Nicole. The money from that revolving account comes from the resale of iPads back to the company when we turn them in.
Yes.
So we typically get three years out of an iPad, and then we revolve them, and then we sell them back, and the money goes back into revolving accounts. So we're using that to offset some of the purchases of iPads in this year's operating budget. So again, the purpose of the revolving account, we feel is honored with this reduction. And we feel like we can sustain using those dollars moving forward. And then, again, the other ones are relatively low numbers. And then, the one down the bottom is the, is a lot of the training that was associated with the Keys to Literacy. We're strong believers in that program. But we feel like we've been implementing it for a number of years, and we have the ability to do more of a train-the-trainer model where we can have our local experts train others who are coming in. And this still leaves enough money to make sure new teachers who are coming into the district and hired are introduced to the Keys to Literacy program. And that's a pre-K through 12 program that we utilize. So given all those reductions, you see that that's the $2.8 million. That gets our total operating budget down to $64,690,145, or a 4.5% guideline. And again, that sets aside money in a negotiated settlement line that we feel, we hope, can allow us to bargain in good faith and settle contracts moving forward.
Discussion.
Good question.
Go ahead.
So we're adding the, I'm trying to follow the math. Remove all salary requests. Add the Francis Wyman ESL teacher is, you know, a positive number. But are we also adding the BHS ESL IA back in? That's on the fourth line, where we're moving salaries from school choice. So we're hiring two?
No, so there's two salaries, an ESL teacher and an IA that we're going to be using choice dollars.
Okay, so one is a new position, one's an existing position?
Correct.
Okay. Makes sense. I was going to ask you how many retirements and section count reductions? It sounds like we don't know that yet. I would love to know when we, you do know?
So for retirements, there was five additional retirements since we originally put out the superintendent's budget.
Okay.
So we're accounting for the difference in hiring typically a master's, 15-step three. And then, also, three additional retirements that weren't being backfilled. And then, some, one vacancy, current vacancy that we're not anticipating filling. And then, the others are some section counts.
Okay.
And we feel like we can maintain our programming. I just don't want to get into the exact specifics because I want to make sure I speak to those individuals. That's all.
So my comment based on that, I think last year, we went slightly over guideline. So I know there's a lot of conversations at town meeting and throughout the town of what our ability to raise budgets is, raise taxes are. I just want us to make clear to town meeting that for us to even meet the 4.5% is we're making cuts. I know we're not firing teachers, but these are cut. There's a four teachers that aren't being replaced. And no new positions at all, basically. So I want us to be very clear. I would love to see us be able to go over this 4.5. But this level funding is basically, we're cutting the budget here in order to hit this 4.5% guidance. So I think we've said it before, but it's not necessarily sustainable if we want to be increasing services.
Through the chair, Ms. Masardo, I thank you for those comments. I agree. I also think there are some longstanding priorities the committee has that we weren't able to fit in that guideline. So elementary assistant principal would be one. And we felt like, Dr. Pritchard showed you the numbers. Our middle school is basically going to be almost the same size as the high school. Another assistant principal would have been very well utilized at the middle school as well. So we really had to make some difficult choices. And we felt like it was responsible for us to make sure that we believe we had enough in a negotiated settlement line to continue to bargain in good faith. And so there's a large unknown in this budget as well. And hoping that, again, we can work within the parameters here to get contracts settled. If that's the case, we believe in fiscal '26, at least while we have settled contracts moving forward, the budget presentation is a lot more definitive. So please understand, there's a large pool of money here that is sort of unassigned at this time.
Jeremy, you got anything?
I kind of want to pull on the professional development thread, but I think this ties into what Dr. Chen briefed earlier with the continuing literacy kind of curriculum review. We'll make up those dollars later. Just basically, we're going to do in-house training transitionally till we get there, yes? Okay.
Catherine, you have any questions?
No.
But I did want to say it would have helped had the document that we were all talking about been posted for everyone, so everyone could see it. I mean, I pulled it up for myself, but. Yeah.
Megan, questions on the budget?
Nothing new to share, no.
Are you actually reducing positions, not filling positions? And to what extent is that okay and not a problem?
I think the extent that it's okay and not a problem would be up to you all as individuals and as a committee. I felt like we could maintain. My work over the years, for instance, a priority of the school committee has always been small elementary class sizes. We always try to work with sort of an 18:1 ratio district-wide. I know there are some that are 21. We also have some that are 14. So I'm talking district-wide. And we felt like we could maintain that, given the enrollments that we are seeing. Just like there have been years when schools, instead of having five homeroom sections, only require four, we may not fill a retirement. So we are just saying this is a one-year, we believe, a one-year adjustment. If we have lots of kindergarten registrations that are unknown at this point, we may need to come back to the committee like we always have.
Where are the reductions in elementary? Is there a drop in enrollment?
There is a drop in enrollment in some of the early elementary grades. But as I said, I can really get specific with you. I just want to make sure I speak to the principals and some of the individuals who are impacted first. Because, again, we are protecting everyone's job. But the number of sections at each school may need to be adjusted by the enrollment we currently see.
What would be the highest enrollment?
Nicole, you ran that. I think it would be 21.
What, the highest student to a teacher?
Yes.
A 19.25 in a grade four.
So 19 or 20.
It's not too bad, I guess.
Again, I just want to make sure I say, if we get 50 kindergarten enrollments over the summer, then our planning is off.
And how many retirements altogether were there?
I think we're close to 10.
I think there's, I think there's 11.
Okay, close enough. Anyone else have any questions? Any more questions? I think I probably speak for all of us when I say we can live with 19. But to get much higher than that, I think we'd probably want to go to town meeting and say, "Our class sizes are getting too high." I mean, I understand they're going down, okay? So I'm not complaining. I'm just saying that what we have done for years is try to maintain the 18 to 20. 22 is high, you know? So if we're under 20, that's pretty good. But if it changes, it won't be.
Correct.
Is that an average or is that an actual, the largest class is 19?
That was the largest class. I think the average is.
Okay, well, it's .25, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, is it like one class of 20?
Yes. So I'm saying 19 or 20 would probably be the outlier. But I think district-wide, we're going to be 18:1 or below. We do watch for classes over 20. We might have one or two classes over 20. And we would prioritize upper elementary schools for that, those numbers, versus the early elementary grades. So all I'm saying, and we will, again, I promise you'll have all this detail. We have all this detail. I just want the opportunity to speak to principals first. But it's not unheard of for a school to add a section if they need it. So Fox Hill has a few grades that have five homerooms. And then Francis Wyman this year has, I think, four fifth grades. So just depending on where the enrollments are.
Okay, do you want to come out of the budget hearing and then vote the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there a motion to come out of the hearing?
Moved we come out of the budget hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Jeremy? Aye.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Megan? Catherine?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're out of the budget hearing. And these are the numbers, right? So the salary, the non-salary.
And the total?
And the total, and the accommodated.
Yes.
So it's, how many votes, three? Salary, total.
Four votes, salary, non-salary, total, operating.
Do you want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the operating salary budget of $56,118,027.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question or comment? Hearing none. Catherine?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Jeremy? Chair votes aye.
All right. I move that we approve the operating expense budget of $8,572,118.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Catherine?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I move that we approve the total operating budget of $64,690,145.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none. Catherine?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I move that we approve the total accommodated budget of $15,206,11.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Catherine?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we have voted them all. Do you want this? So I guess we have a budget to go to Ways and Means with, huh? Okay, do we have anything else tonight?
We don't. We had the executive session in case there was something to update on. We have not had a bargaining meeting. We're actually working on scheduling our next one with Darren and with Jill. So I just put a placeholder there just in case we had had a budgeting update.
Okay. Oh, Eric does.
Yes, he does it.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn? Oh, second.
All those in favor? Catherine?
Aye.
Megan? Melissa?
Yes.
Jeremy? Chair votes aye, we adjourn.
Catherine, best of luck.